And I call the meeting to order. This is the August 18th, 2022 county meeting. I appreciate everybody, everybody coming tonight. Good class. We'll have some interesting information here. And will I be as long as the last week? Thank you. I'm gonna ask our chief of the district to lead us in the vacation. Then we'll ask Bill Walker after that, an employee and staff to lead us in, please.
Dear heavenly father, lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for the many blessings that you give us each and every day. Thank you for the opportunity for us to gather together as a people to discuss county business. Thank you for our leadership. Thank you for all the understanding and all the abilities that we have in this county to run and operate just a wonderful place. Lord, we ask you be with us tonight. Give us wisdom. Give us understanding. Please be with us with all the decisions that we make. Lord, and always give us for all the times that we fail. In Jesus Christ's holy name I pray. Amen.
Veterans render hands salute, please. My pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Okay, we're gonna start with item number one under presentation. In 2010, when the alcohol referendum was passed, I made the commitment to set aside up to $50,000 each year for alcohol, from the alcohol license fees and tax receipts to put back into the community by the purpose of helping to combat alcohol and drug abuse problem that already existed at the time. We have a completely independent committee set up to review these applications and award the grants. The committee has done an excellent job every year, and I commend them highly for the time that they spend selecting recipients, but they wish to remain anonymous. I personally had no input into which organizations received the grants, nor how much they received. We had six organizations apply for a grant this year, and four were awarded the funding. So tonight, we have representatives from the organizations here with us. We would like to recognize them and present them with their checks. And as they come up, I'm gonna ask them just to say a few words about what they do so that y'all would know what that is. In this time of such a tremendous problem nationwide with opioid crisis and other drug issues, it's very nice to know that we have these nonprofit organizations spending their time and effort to assist in the recovery effort in Union County. So I hereby awarding the grants to the following local organization, like I said, we'll do one at a time. Please come up and call your name, and please make a statement. Freedom Ministries Boo Spout. And Boo can't slip in and say Boo because everybody sees him from my...
Might have to adjust this just a little bit. Freedom Ministry started about 16 years ago by doing faiths, cross standard substance abuse counseling. And over the years, as drug court came along and the accountability courts, we started to realize that we were losing men that qualified for the courts, for the program that didn't have a safe place to live that qualified with them. So we opened the Freedom House almost five years ago, and we housed the men that are in accountability courts that otherwise would be, were getting lost to prison. So that's, that's what we do. I'm not running out before we have church tonight.
Thank Boo. He really does a great job, and he and the other volunteers are really awesome. New Hope Counseling, $5,000 to Boo. Figure if we give them the check before they talk, Bill, talk longer.
You know, I bet everyone in here knows somebody that has or has had a substance abuse problem. It might be you, might be a family member, might be a friend, a coworker. So what do you do if you have a problem with alcohol or drugs in Union County? Well, you can come to New Hope Counseling, and we'll schedule you an appointment, and you can come in for a consult and a cup of coffee. And we will, if we can't provide the service that you need, we'll refer you to a service that can. Let me give you some examples. Let's say you've been doing drugs and alcohol for a long period of time, and when you try to stop, you go and withdraw. You start craving the drug or the alcohol, your heart rate increases, your blood pressure goes up, you start swating profusely, and you need hospitalization. Well, I worked at the, as an intake specialist in the emergency room at Northeast Georgia Medical Center for three years, and it was my job to facilitate admissions to the hospital or to the appropriate facility. And I maintain a relationship with those folks, so I can help you get in. And hopefully, none of you have ever tried to get treatment for detox, but it's not easy. Well, let's suppose you've been in prison for about 10 years. You know, prison's not very conducive for therapy for alcohol and drug treatment, but they do have programs. And let's assume you participated, and you haven't had a drink or done any drugs for 10 years, lots of years, and you get out. Well, for the first time in the history of Union County, we now have a fully staffed recovery center. Positive Pathways. When you're treated addiction, you want to look at prevention, you want to look at treatment, and you want to look at recovery. Addiction's incurable, but it's very treatment, and we now have a recovery center. So when that person gets out of prison, if you get out of prison, you can go to Positive Pathways, and instead of going back to the place where you were, they'll give you support for you and your family, and they'll change your environment so you don't go back to the same place. Or let's just suppose you've been drinking a few too many cold beers or drinking, or smoking too many joints, and you don't really need professional help, and we can refer you to Alcoholics Anonymous or Narcotics Anonymous, and they will provide you with groups, and they'll give you a sponsor, where you'll be picking up the phone instead of picking up the bottle. Or let's suppose you've got spiritually lost, and you need spiritual help and support. Well, we'll refer you to Celebrate Recovery out at the First Baptist Church. They are a nationally recognized faith-based treatment program. Or let's suppose you've got your driver's license suspended because you got a DUI. New Hope Counseling is approved by the DUI Intervention Program and the DDS, the DMV, and we provide clinical evaluations and treatment. We do the DUI School, the Risk Reduction Program, and the Victim Impact Program. Let's suppose you're about to get fired from your job. We have an Employee Assistance Program where we can contact your employer, and we can work with your employer. If you complete your treatment sessions and your breathalyzers and drug screens are negative, then you'll be accountable, and you can keep your job. Let's suppose you got arrested for a drug charge in your own probation, and you got mandated to attend the treatment program. New Hope Counseling is approved by the SAMSA, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Association, and the Georgia Department of Behavior, and we have a court mandated program. And we work with probation, and the way this program works, you're mandated to attend our treatment sessions, and if you attend our treatment sessions and you follow through with treatment, then life is good, but if you don't show up for treatment, or if you fell a drug screen, then we refer you back to probation, and you may go to jail for a few days. But when you get out, you come back to New Hope. Now, if you're in a court mandated program, you may be in denial that you have an alcohol or drug problem. You may blame us. You may blame your probation officer. You may bring, blame law enforcement. Finally, if you go in jail and you come back and you go enough times, finally, maybe you'll realize. You know, you've heard the expression, you can take a horse to water, but you can't make it drink. Well, I've found if you make it stand there long enough, it'll get thirsty. Maybe you've been drinking alcohol, killing a fifty Jack Daniels every day for a long time, and you've got cirrhosis of the liver. We're approved by Piedmont Hospital to offer the prerequisite treatment so you can be eligible, and you have to have alcohol and drug treatment before you can get on the donor list. And I don't know if you've ever seen anybody with cirrhosis of the liver, but it's not a pretty sight. They're bloody, they're big, they can't hardly walk, their skin is yellow. But if you see somebody that got a liver transplant, and after a period of recovery, you see the transformation, it's remarkable, and it's rewarding. Maybe you've lost your license because you're a nurse and you haven't, you have a substance abuse problem. We're approved by the State Board of Nursing, and we have a treatment program to, where you can get your license reinstated. But all these programs take money, and the people that come to us usually don't have any. They're either broke, or they're working from paycheck to paycheck. So we sincerely appreciate this money that we're getting, and it can change people's lives, and it can get people back in progression in society where they, you know, they might become taxpayers again. So yes, we sincerely appreciate this money, and we'll put it to good use. It'll be money well spent. Thank you.
I'd be hard pressed to understand that he's really excited about this. I'm telling you, it's amazing what it's done in this community for these people, and these are people you don't often see the results of their problems, or even though they've got them, until you deal with these other folks and see how much they do for them. So we're really appreciative of that. Next will be Positive Pathways. Summer Chris. I think Troy probably didn't even...
Yeah. You forgot the check.
Hey, guys. My name's Summer. I'm the founder and executive director of Positive Pathways, and this is Shawna Hawkins. She's our administrative director. I'm just gonna share super briefly with you guys about what we do at Positive Pathways. I'm gonna start by sharing about, a little bit about a book that I'm reading right now. It's called Grit. It's by Angela Duckworth. In this book, she discusses the difference between truly successful individuals and talented individuals based on the power of passion and perseverance. I bring this up tonight because, yes, at the recovery community organization, we offer substance abuse, mental health, recovery services, but we go beyond that by offering opportunities for community members to learn life skills that help them stay gainfully employed, learning the ins and outs of tasks like financial literacy, parenting, and wellness recovery planning. We instill success in life and in recovery. We take the time to teach character traits such as accountability, perseverance, and grit. We take the time because most of our staff has been affected by substance abuse or mental health issues. We've dedicated the last 18 months to the mission of helping others become successful in recovery and giving them safe space to learn all these necessary skills to stay in recovery. At Positive Pathways, we offer peer recovery support services such as yoga, harm reduction trainings, all recovery meetings, Dharma recovery, healing arts, groups focused on exercise and nutrition, Codependence Anonymous, and now Youth Move for individuals who are 29 years or younger. We also offer individual and family peer support because those who need a little more skill building and a more intimate setting need that. We would not be able to provide any of these services without the help and support of Union County and specifically Lamar Paris. Lamar recognizes in me the grit and passion and perseverance, and in that recognition, he has helped me become successful and afforded me the opportunity to give that knowledge back to the sit-ins since of Union County. I just want to thank the Union County Commissioner's Office again for funding our programs that we offer at Positive Pathways.
Last one is Union County Family Connection with Amy Hinson.
Hi. My name's Amy Hinson. I am the chairperson for Family Connection. Katie Jones is the face of Family Connection, but she couldn't be here tonight. If you're not familiar with Family Connection, it's an organization, it's state funded, it's in our school system here in Union County, and they work with school-aged students, helping them overcome any type of barrier that they might have in preventing them from anything with their education, whether it's glasses, to shoes, to backpacks, or if their family needs help getting their power bill paid, or propane, anything and all they deal with here, just for our kids in Union County, so it's a great program. We appreciate this grant because this allows them funding to go into the schools, to do activities, and items for them to have for the kids, to teach them about substance abuse. You'll see a lot of billboards throughout the county. Over the last several years, they always do a large billboard trying to educate people. They do a lot of surveys amongst the kids to let them know that not as many people are drinking underage as they might think. They do a lot of things with the kids, so we can't thank you enough, and we couldn't do it without Union County and this grant, so thank you.
Thanks again to all of y'all for coming and the work you, tireless work that you do, and just coming to some of these events where they have these groups of people who have been successful and come to the meetings. It's really amazing and incredible thing to see how much they do for our community, and we're very proud of what they do, and blessed that we have those type of people willing to work and help us and help those who are in need of them. We'll move on to number two, item number two. Which is an agreement. I hereby accept this agreement between ACNS Incorporated and Union County to provide computer consulting services to 911 dispatch in the amount of $600 per month to include, but not limited to workstation maintenance, servers, and network operations. The duration of this contract is one year from August 1st, 2022, to July 31st, 2023. Item number three is a grant. I hereby accept this grant awarded to the Union County Fire Department from Walmart in the amount of $2,000. These grant funds are being used to purchase three iPads for the fire trucks at Station One. Station One checks every piece of equipment on every truck each morning. The iPads are used to store this information since it is a cloud-based program. If there is any issue with equipment, it can immediately be communicated to the battalion chief. Also, every commercial building in Union County has a pre-fire plan, and the iPads are used to store this information in a cloud-based format, also so that the plans are on the trucks in the event of a fire. And we certainly appreciate that grant from them. Item four, five, and six deal with a lot of what you've heard tonight earlier related to drug, but a lot of this stuff is not funded by just county and just these organizations. Some of it is funded by the state, which makes it, it wouldn't be possible without, without that, or wouldn't be totally possible without that. So item on the agenda are all accountability court grants. And as soon as I get through this, don't let me forget, I'm gonna go back and adopt the minutes that I forget every week, just for, or every month, just for that. Skip right over. Item four, five, and six on the agenda are all accountability court grants for the Anoda Judicial Circuit. I appreciate that the governor and the legislature, legislators, legislators have set up the drug court program and provide state funds to operate them. Positive outcomes for the individuals who have addiction problems and complete this program is, as I said earlier, incredible. The grant period for all three grants is from July the 1st, 2022, to June the 30th, 2023. I hereby approve the following three grants. Accountability Courts Grant for Anoda Adult Felony Drug Courts South, which includes White and Lumpkin County, in the amount of $350,000, 100, I'm sorry, $350,175. Accountability Court Grant for Anoda Adult Felony Drug Courts North, which includes Union and Toms, in the amount of $241,080. And finally, Accountability Court Grant for Anoda Drug Court in the amount of $194,824. That covers the whole system. I'm gonna skip from item seven back to at the very top where I approve the minutes, and I hereby approve the minutes. I think everyone here should have a copy. So I hereby approve those minutes from the August 4th, 2022 county meeting. Item seven is a notice of award. I hereby approve this notice of award, a contract dated August 18th, 2022, for the construction of Union County Fire Station Number 13, the Winkler and Winkler Construction in the amount of $2,437,583. Union County received two proposals for the construction of Fire Station Number 13. The other proposal was submitted by Scruggs and Grissel out of Clermont, Georgia, in the amount of $2,946,734. And Chief, I didn't put this in, or you might come up just real quick and talk to them about Station 13 and what all this is.
So Fire Station Number 13 is gonna be hidden hardware on the Murphy Highway. It's gonna be one area that's gonna cover the north part of Union County. We have three volunteer stations up there, but this station, we have plans to put in career firefighters, which means there'll be firefighters there 24 hours a day, seven days a week to be able to respond there. It'll give us about a seven to eight minute jump for that area, for all the citizens in that area, for medical calls, fire calls, anything like this. This fire station's been in the works for a couple of years. We've got the land donated to us, and so we've been looking, working on this for a very long time. It's really, the biggest thing is gonna help the ISO rating in that area and some people who have insurance rates that are really high in that area is gonna bring those insurance rates down. So better coverage and better insurance rates.
Thanks very much, David, and we are really looking forward to this station being completed. Also, that he didn't say, we also have room for EMS, which is ambulance, so we'll have room there for an ambulance to be stationed there. Should Union County Ambulance Service, Union General Ambulance Service decides to station one out there, because that is one of the busiest parts of the county, and so we're looking forward to that. And also, there'll be a place, and no, be a sleeping quarter for that. No, also be a place for sheriff, sheriff deputy, if they want to be out there, if they're gonna be stationed out there, we'll have a little extra room for that, too. So it's really, for the long, long run, it's gonna be a real asset to the county. Resolution R 2022-18 is number eight. And I hereby accept this resolution certifying the renegotiation of the distribution of revenues received from the local option sales tax. And this'll be a little bit confusing, maybe I can simplify it a little bit, maybe I can. It's called a LOST, L-O-S-T, Local Option Sales Tax. And just to remind everybody, we, Union County and most counties in Georgia actually have, some of the larger counties may have a little higher numbers, and even some of the counties that pass T-SLOTS, they will have an extra penny, too. But those that didn't, like us, is seven pennies is the sales tax rate. So you've got four pennies that goes straight to the state of Georgia. You've got one school tax called E-SLOTS, and you've got one S-PLOTS tax, which Union County uses, just a straight S-PLOTS. And then you've got LOST, which stands for Local Option Sales Tax. Counties and cities within Georgia are required to renegotiate the distribution of the revenues received from the local option sales tax periodically. This renegotiation takes place every 10 years. Union County and the City of Blairville represented met on August 1st, 2022. These governing authorities agreed that the distribution of proceeds of LOST would remain the same from January the 1st to 2023 to December 31st to 2032, as it has been for the past 10 years, with the City of Blairville receiving 20% of the funds and the County of Union receiving 80%. This is a penny sales tax that most people do not realize or certainly understand. It is basically a sales tax, one penny of the seven pennies that I mentioned earlier. The reason for the tax, and the reason you don't really know about it or hear about it, because it's not one that has to be voted on, is set up by the legislature, and the amount of the sales tax collection comes directly off of your sales tax. So it allows us to take that penny that's 1%, and I wish we could get more of those and take more of that directly off your property tax, but that one penny comes directly off your property tax and goes into the county court for utilization. And again, this helps keep our taxes some of the lowest property tax rate in the state of Georgia of 159 counties. Item number nine is Resolution R 2022-19. I hereby accept this resolution to amend the fiscal 2021 budget from $21,748,780 to $22,987,386, as per the state and federal reporting requirements. This is something that we do every year, amend the regular budget required by the accounting standards. Item 10 is Resolution R 2022-20. I hereby accept this resolution to adopt and add the updated debris management plan on the local operations plan from the Union County Fire Department Emergency Management Agency. Natural and man-made disasters such as hurricanes, tornadoes, ice storms, major storms, events, and flooding have the potential to generate a variety of natural and man-made debris. We've been very blessed in the last few years, but during my term in office, we've had some really big storms and some big debris issues that we've had to deal with. The quantities and type of this debris that's generated, its location and the size of the area which it is dispensed can directly impact the health, safety, and welfare of county residents. The Union County Debris Management Plan is designed to provide an organized, structured guidance and standardized procedure for the clearance, removal, and disposal of debris in most timely, efficient, and cost-effective methods. So to put that, I guess it's hard to simplify that, but it basically means when this happens, when we have a storm, the state of Georgia... when we have a storm, the state of Georgia requires that you keep accurate and specific records of every load of debris, stumps, limbs, whatever it is that's taken to the landfill. You have to keep records of all of that so that you have the opportunity to reimburse for whatever's available in that particular issue. Okay, the last main business item is, and you see it's 11 through 73, business licenses of the following permits, or new permits submitted for business license, hotel motel tax, which is the only business license required in Union County. While there have been a lot of new licenses registered, licenses these registered in the past 60 days, we feel that the vast majority were already being utilized as short-term rental and simply did not understand clearly that the tax was due to be paid at the county and city when they did a short-term rental. And so, I have to read all these to you, but it's a requirement, so I'm gonna read them out. Door Shell Ivy Creek, 49 Ivy Log Gap Code. A lot of interesting names, as I say, sound. Little Knot Cottage, 39 Cottage Creek Way. Forest Edge, 324 Hazel Ridge Road. Moon Ridge LLC, 52 Moon Ridge. Our Mountain Blessing, 616 Emmerine Road. Land Rental, 255 Chicory Drive East. Leo's Creek, 1129 Bert Nix Road. Willie's Mountain Lodge, 89 Black Oak Drive. Quorum Rental, 135 Macintosh Road. Anita Vacay LLC, we probably all do. 121 Low Creek Lane. North Georgia Mountain Rental, 131 Little Ed Road. Rest Assured Retreat, 334 Craig Thompson Drive. Whispering Pines, 232 Cook Lane. Rodriguez Rental, 16th Carroll Road. Curlin Rental, 225 Mountaintop View. Carberry Rental, 823 Aaron Road. Home Development and Assistance LLC, 40 Seymour Drive. Hillside Hideaway, 6 Stubblefield Road. The Happy Place, 51 Silver Fox Drive. Swenson Rental, 658 Whispering Pines. Stallings Rental, 54 Stallings Way. Butler Rental, 194 Awesome Truck Road. Driscoll Rental, 4461 State Highway 325. Rosio Rental, 1343 Highland Trace. Farm Row Rental, 79 Seenth Drive. Holly Hill Drive LLC, 194 Holly Hill Drive. Cranpool Cottage, 443 Trailwood Drive. Biggs Farm, I'm sorry, Chicks Fam, that's one word. Chicks Fam Properties LLC, 360 PN Watkins Road. K&amp;G Services Incorporated, 54 Mountaintop B Road. Wash Rental, 709 Prairie D Road. Corvello Rental, 87 Largen Road. Rip and Remmy's Properties LLC, 17 Happy Hollow. Von Hoff Rental, 3027 Highway 180. Tanner Road Properties LLC, and there are multiple properties on that one. Harton Rental, 765 Eagle Ben Road. JR Endeavors LLC, 30 That Way. Black Bear Cave, 70 Angel Heart Lane. Rogers Rental, 127 Macintosh Road. Terre Rental, 4, sorry, 4 Rental, 971 Stevens Road. Sturgis Rental, 58 Bitter Creek Overlook. Oster Lake Rental, 166 Wilma Fabbas Mountain Road. Can't imagine people on the way to miss all these names. Rutherford Rental, 708 Wilson Mountain Road. Sweetwater Cottage LLC, 149 Knottley Shores West. Lake House at the Grove, 63 Valley View Court. EMV Investments LLC, 67 Kimber Grace Court. Hidden Ridge Retreat, 195 Ragged Ridge Road, such as. Lester Rental, 38 Kane Creek Ridge. Memory Lane Cabin, 474 Memory Lane Drive. Harris Mountain Rental LLC, 9 Thunder Road. DNJ Enterprises, Angel Heart Lance Parcel Number 007-047-A05. Marletter Rental, 596 Crump Creek Road. Kimby Rental, 432 Brandon Ridge. Plate Rental, 173 Brandon Ridge. One Then Two LLC, 19 This Way. Amninsky Diab Rental, 595 Brown Ridge. Kenny Rental, 60 That Way. I think we had this way and that way. I haven't seen it the other way. Capulosa Rental, 22 This Way. Knott Mall Rental, 315 Cook Lane. Third and Lowry LLC, 79 Laurel Lane. Wing Dringle Rental, 1, by Rebel Ridge Road. And I'm saying this, W-E-N-G, it could be Wayne, but Wing Dringle Rental, 2, 87 Hell of a Creek Road. High Family Holdings, 11 Lake Vista Drive. Knott La Vista LLC, 120 South Watch Place. That's all of those. The new proposed, which is kind of going to be in line with this, the new proposed short-term rental ordinance. We hope we'll have the first reading within six to eight weeks. I know it seems like a long time, and if you've got all these rental, there's all kinds of problems and issues that can come up in this committee. It's really working hard to try to make sure we can cover everything that needs to be covered to first go around where they're also checking with all the other counties who are in the process of doing ordinances and trying to come up with what we can cover and hopefully cover most of that. Because the committee is working tirelessly to have a very comprehensive ordinance, and we'll have several review it prior to the first reading, which I said hopefully will be within one to two months. We had Laurie Brothers and Marion Schneider, who had requested to be placed on the agenda to speak tonight. Unfortunately, both of them canceled and have requested to be placed on the agenda for the September 15th, 2022 county meeting. And just a couple of comments, again, to try to get us out here at a reasonable time to make up for last week. A Moxon Creek Transfer Station, and we talked about it a little bit, but it's a new, there'll be a new recycle and trash pickup. And there's a fire station back behind where Petit's Grocery is down in Knottland Down and 129 Nor. And so if you go to the fire station and turn left just before you get to the fire station, this will go down to the new facility, which we're going to be opening. It's not completely ready, because what we'd hope to have is electric compactors for each of the categories where your items will, recycle items will be put in. But with everything going on in the country right now, and the equipment and the timeframe, it's been delayed and delayed. So they're hoping that maybe within, maybe a month, six weeks, they'll have the equipment in. But we're going to go ahead and open it and be doing it manually. So the Moxon Creek Transfer Station will be open on this trial basis beginning this Monday. And I just told you kind of where it was behind the fire station for recyclables and trash. The gun range is awaiting permission. And you hear us talk about the gun range, and it's something all the time. So we'll never be able to tell you when it's going to be available. But we have let it be it, everything's in process. We're waiting permission on the tree cutting on the US Forest Service property. So this facility, what complicates it the most probably is that it is on US Forest Service property. And so anything you do, there's, and there's nothing against them. They've got their, it's the federal government, and they've got their laws and bylaws they've got to go by. But they're pretty extensive. So every, and this is a, this property is the shooting range. And one reason it was chosen, because it's mostly grass out there. There's a pretty rare grass patch of that size out there. But there are a few trees that quite could be cut. So US Forest Service, we have to mark every tree that's going to come down. US Forest Service has to come out and analyze the tree, decide what the trees were, give the county a value on it, and we have to pay them for it. And once they agree to all that, then we can go in and the contractor can cut the trees. And they gotta be paid for before they remove. Still awaiting the approval of the power installation. So the power's got to be running about two miles down Highway 180 to get to the range. And of course, part of that's along Forest Service property. So that's the deal between the power company and the Forest Service and trying to work out details there. And they'll, they'll get it worked out, because the power doesn't really have to come in for a little while. Everybody can work off generators while they're out there working. So it shouldn't really hold up the project, we hope. And just one last thing, the canning plant at the farmer's market is saying, I talked to the guys over there this, this last week, says the busiest year that they've ever had in the history of having the canning plant open. And they're real excited about that. They let you know today that we're probably going to be, next year, not probably, but next year we'll have to open three days a week. It's open two days a week now, so it'll have to be open three days a week starting next year. But we're excited that we have something to offer that's that useful and that much in demand. And at that point, that is adjournment for the actual county meeting. And I'm going to turn it over to our county attorney.
Good evening, everybody. We're going to do the question and answer session now. Please keep in mind, if you have a question, we're only going to take questions that are dealing with items on the agenda. If you have some question that doesn't deal with the items on the agenda, feel free to talk to me afterwards. I can probably put you in touch with somebody. Call the Commissioner's Office during normal business hours, Monday through Friday, 9 to 5. And sometimes there's a sign-up sheet out there where you can leave your information and a question, and someone will get back to you, okay? Before I start calling on people, I would actually like to make a statement about something on the agenda, if you don't mind. I work very, very closely with one of the Accountability Courts for towns in Union County. I work in, well, I was, I was in this particular court most of the day today. And it deals with parents who have abused or neglected their children. And you don't understand the importance of rehabilitating drug addicts, whether they have to go through the court system, whether nobody hears from one of the private places who got a grant today, but they do important work as well. And I think we're all here, no matter what your religion, politics, or favorite shoe brand is, we're all here tonight because we care about this county. And the Accountability Courts, the private people with their grants, they do such a great job for this county to try to rehabilitate the addicts we have here to make this just an even better place, one person at a time. And my particular field of where I work with the children and their parents, that's even more important, because if we can really rehabilitate one parent, that child actually has a future now. That child didn't have a future with a drug-addict parent. And, and they didn't have a chance. And if you can get them on straight and narrow, and you can actually get them rehabilitated, you know, that helps the children of our county as well. And so I think that's very important. They don't get a lot of praise, and they don't get a lot of, you know, people actually saying nice things about them. But it's one of the most underlooked, important jobs we can do. Because if we didn't have that here, we would just have addicts running up and down the street like this was Buckhead or something, you know? All right, I'm off my soapbox. Anybody, anybody got a question about the agenda? Yes, ma'am.
I'm still trying to understand the difference between lost and splotched. I'm working on it. But I, you said that it is.
I'm sorry, excuse me a minute. This is my fault. This lady has a severe problem with hearing, and she asked that I would, if you have a question, to stand up so that she can see your lips and kind of read the lips. So if y'all don't mind, whoever has a question, if you would stand up while you're, while you're talking for her.
Okay. Yeah, sorry about that. I should have known. So it was mentioned that lost is something that we don't vote on, is created by legislation. And I'm wondering, is that state legislation, like Georgia state? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I would like to follow up on your comments about the recovery part of these addicts and children. I'm a member of First Amendment Church, he is in South Franklin, CO. I also want to thank the bar and account for supporting these groups, because our children is our future, and it's very important that we protect them and end the environment we speak them.
You know, I can't, I can't name names, because this is still an ongoing case. And I wouldn't do that to someone anyways. But there was a parent today that actually graduated one of these Accountability Courts. And when this person's case first opened, I don't think anybody that worked with me thought this child was going to be with this parent. And it took almost two years. But this person is now a productive member of our community. This child's been with this parent now for better part of nine months, no issues, no relapses. I mean, this person is really made of 180. And that's something that, as Union County citizens, we can all be proud of, that we chip in to help people out.
And every one of their lives are very important. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I, I want, I would like to get the, on the resolution, number 10, R 2022-20, I believe, Mr. President, that was for disaster possibility and all that, correct?
Debris removal, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Does that, would that make any difference with the ballot measure we have on the ballot for 20, November 20, which is the Georgia Temporary Property Tax Change for Disaster Areas Amendment? Would that affect this?
I'm going to see if Chief Dyer knows that answer.
I, I don't really know. Explain what you're trying to, which.
I'm asking what, what, what would make, I would like to get the paperwork on that.
A copy of the plan?
In order to find out whether that measure that's going to be on the ballot would be affecting this, because that's about property tax change due to a disaster, which is the possibility. which is the possibility of this, um, resolution, well, number ten item.
Do you have the measure, do you have the measurement that's gonna be on the ballot? Read it to them. Do you have that that's gonna be on the ballot in November?
Yeah, I have a, uh...
Read that, so they understand what you're, uh...
Oh, okay, you don't know what's on the ballot?
Maybe, maybe I can explain what the plan is. Uh, we can provide you with a public copy of that plan. And, and that plan is a, it's, it's a comprehensive plan for the entire county. If we had a major disaster, so we had a lot of debris, things on the road, things on county property that we need to clear up, the only thing this plan states is what we're going to do, and who's gonna do it, and how we're gonna do it. And it also states if we have to provide another contractor to come in and help us if it's overwhelming our county, what we would do. So it's all a stated procedure, and most counties have a plan just like this.
Okay. I just wonder why it's on the, uh, on the ballot if you're gonna do one of these.
I'm not sure it has any ballot whatsoever. I don't think it has anything bigger than this right there.
It says, um, Temporary Property Tax Change for Disaster Damaged Properties Amendment. Taxes author, authorizes local government to grant temporary property tax changes for properties damaged by disaster areas and located within disaster area.
Ms., Ms. Loogins, I, I think I can answer your question.
Okay.
Okay, um, so this, this resolution just covers the plan for the fire department, how they would actually implement getting the debris's up? Not anything to do with funding them to do that, or, um, the only thing that deals with the funding, from what I understand, is if they have to go dump all this debris in a landfill, they just have to keep track of everything they dump, because there might be possible reimbursement at a higher level of government for Union County. Am, am I correct about that, sir? Uh, but the ballot measure to do with any taxation, pass, not pass, whatever, it wouldn't change the plan that the county needs to implement or that the county has to follow in the event of debris removal.
Well, I'm glad you clarified that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there, uh, escrow amount set aside for the emergency disaster disposal on these endeavors? Uh, how, how would that be funded, just out of curiosity?
I don't know that offhand. Um, Ms. Hawkins, do you know that offhand? Is there a escrow fund for disaster debris removal?
No, because typically, and David may have to, uh, Chief Dyer may have to help him with this, but I know one disaster we had, which was, I'm sorry?
Can you speak about...
Sorry, um, the last disaster I remember that FEMA had to get involved was the Christmas Day flooding we had a few years ago. Um, and what we had to do was we had to immediately just start spending county money out of the general fund for the disaster with police force and fire and rescue and anything that had to be done. Um, and then when it was declared a federal disaster, and FEMA said, you know, we can give money to counties to help you, then we had to submit all our paperwork and submit, you know, everything we spent so we could get reimbursed from FEMA. But we don't necessarily have an escrow account setting aside anywhere. We just have to be prepared to spend when we need it, and then submit to FEMA for reimbursement.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right, well, have a good evening, thank you all for coming.